The puppies, the puppies.
Okay. I'm going to call, call to order the special meeting of the Ellsworth Plan Board for February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Could the board introduce themselves, please?
Hello, I'm Molly Friedbly.
Mark Rich.
John Delio, Chair.
Rick Lyles, Vice Chair.
And last month, we started introducing staff. There's only two here, but we might as well introduce staff, too.
Matt Williams, City Planner.
And Elizabeth Littlefield, Assistant City Planner.
Okay, so basically, we're here to review the applications to join the Ellsworth Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. I thank everybody for coming. You gave us a lot of good information to read. I thought it was going to be an easy proposition to pick the members. I'm not so sure, because we had a lot of good applicants. But I'll turn the meeting over to Matt. He can explain how we're going to proceed. And by the end of the evening, we'll have, hopefully, chosen our eight members of the Steering Committee. And I, so I see John Stein is here as a council representative is.
Casey's going to make it.
Okay.
And a member of the Steering Committee going forward.
Okay, Matt, it's all yours.
Yep, so the process for the night, I thought I explained it to the board, but I think I actually have explained more to the applicants, is they'll go through the, the applications, you know, you'll read through the questions and answers publicly. And then we'll give the opportunity, optional, for the applicant to come up, kind of give a highlight, two-minute elevator pitch of their information, what they think is important for you to know. And when they've done that, immediately after, the board can ask questions of that applicant. And when you're done, they'll go back, sit down, and just move on to the next application. And, you know, rinse, wash, repeat. I did have one request from applicant Brian Langley. He won't be able to make it till six, so he just asks that. He kind of works through the applicants until he gets here, and then, you know, he's fine to do his part. But, yeah, so go ahead and start going down the numbered order. Unless, any more questions from behind me?
Before we start?
No? Cool. Any questions from in front of me?
Nope.
Side to side?
So if we're going by order, so we're going to start off with Nick Turner?
What?
What order is that? What order is that?
It's in your binder. Yeah, priority, at least, yeah.
Oh, there you go. There's Nick right here.
My name is Nick Turner. I'll be singing Tomorrow from Annie. I won't do that. I am a Ellsworth resident and live right up the road. We bought a house here. My wife and I both live and work here, and my daughter is a eighth grader at Ellsworth Middle School and has been in the school system since, for six years. It's been six years. I know many of you believe it's been much longer, but it's only been six years. I'm also the Executive Director of The Grand. So I feel, not that I may be qualified for this committee, but that my passion and enthusiasm is there to help formulate a comprehensive plan. I have had some introduction to comprehensive plans, going deep into the state's comprehensive plan and economic plan and all those different planning elements. So I would love to be a part of the process if, but there's a lot of very distinguished and qualified people in this room, so I don't think you can go wrong. Do you have any questions?
I think this is the first time I've, I think I've actually seen you, recognize the voice.
Yes, I've been told it shows up on Star a lot, and I apologize.
I guess the question I have, and I may well have this for others as well.
Yes.
It's just whatever kind of unique, I mean, we're looking for some sort of distribution of people and viewpoints and that sort of thing in the Steering Committee.
Excellent.
So I guess my question is, can you bring a unique viewpoint or at least an important viewpoint to that process?
I think, just individually, without knowing the qualifications of everyone in the room, I think I, obviously, my distinct focus would be on the arts and how the arts fit in the comprehensive plan for Ellsworth. Education has been extremely important to me and has been part of my career for thirty years. So how do the education and arts play into the comprehensive plan for a community like Ellsworth? I'm also on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. And I guess the uniqueness that brings me to the arts is most of my career has been in for-profit. This experience with The Grand is my first experience with nonprofit. So I guess if I have any unique perspective, it's how the arts not only fit within the well-being and the culture, obviously, of a community, but how it serves the economic outlook of a community, which I think is often not understood or overlooked. The arts have an incredibly huge economic impact on a community, and I think that's very, very important. If I am not selected to be on the Steering Committee, I would sure hope that I would be heavily involved in contributing to that conversation, and you can count on that. I will be heavily involved in contributing to that conversation.
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
And let me just point out, as he sits down, that, you know, there are eight slots that we're looking at, and there's seventeen applicants.
Yes.
So that means, obviously, that not everyone in the room is going to be one of those folks, right? But there will be some committees and that sort of thing down the line. And so there's lots of opportunities to even take leadership roles in the planning process that goes beyond just being on the Steering Committee, so.
Yep. That was a good point. I was going to add that, too, is like, I mean, obviously, we can only pick eight, and I mean, there's a lot of good people here, and, you know, if you're not selected for the Steering Committee, I mean, we'd still love to have you involved. This is going to be a long process. We need as much help as we can get, and there's a lot of good, talented, well-rounded people here that know more about a lot of this than I do, and I want to have your input. Okay, so let's go to Leslie Harlow.
I think she indicated that she can't make it.
I think she cannot make it.
Oh, okay, that's right.
I would still go through the last couple of questions of her application publicly, a brief statement indicating why she's interested in the, why she's qualified or what her background may be.
Well, why don't you do that?
Okay. So Leslie provided that she's interested in joining the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, because she's looking forward to working with city residents and councilors to help create a vision for the future of Ellsworth. The city's lack of a comp plan for more than a decade has hindered both city government and citizenry to function in a manner that is bustressed by a template of expectations set forth by relevant comp plan. Sorry, it's bustressed. The intent of the comp plan sets forth standards and expectations for the community, has forged its way forward. With the creation of a Steering Committee, it gives our beloved city an opportunity for community engagement, where ideas and the visualization for the future will be developed, which will be a plan for the future. And then her qualifications and background is, as an entrepreneur, Ellsworth resident and tried and true mainer, I bring five decades of experience to the table. From two thousand and five to two thousand and twenty, I was co-owner of the Main Grind Building. As a downtown business owner, I was involved in the Downtown Ellsworth Association. As both a board member and president, I was the founder and operator of the Main Grind Cafe, which was Ellsworth's first official coffee shop. The building became a beacon of community engagement, a de facto incubator hub where a number of current downtown businesses got their start. Examples are the Alchemist Salon, Nisa Smile Jewelry, to name a few. And I currently own and operate Ironbound Restaurant in Hancock, along with Trio Gifts on Main Street.
Okay, thank you. Ed McLeod. Thank you.
Hi, Ed McLeod, Trenton resident. Been there thirteen years full-time, previously in Massachusetts, currently semi-retired. When I make up in public speaking, I excel in technical skills. I'm a licensed engineer, a degreed engineer, and I've been running my own business since college, or maybe a few years after college. And I know solar, wind, waterfront, airport. I'm a licensed pilot. I own a couple of planes. I'm semi-retired, so I'm trying to phase out of running my life at home and get out a little bit. And do you have any questions? I guess I have so much to say. I take all day, I'm so old.
So like a year-by-year summary you're going to give us there?
I've got a question. I'm curious, when asked if you would commit to take the required ethics training, you answered no. Can you elaborate on that?
I'm an engineer, and I'm probably the most honest person you have ever met in your life.
So why not?
In my opinion.
Sure.
So I've been to many, many, many training things, and not all of them are valuable. I'm honest, I'm just, if you catch me in a lie, I'll give you ten dollars.
Is it, just as an aside, but follow-up there, isn't it required by statute that the ethics training be taken?
I don't know about that, but we're requiring it.
Okay, I mean, if I have to, I guess I could, but I think it's, I've been to so many corporate training things that.
If I can, it's, so Ellsworth has an ethics ordinance, but the Steering Committee is not employed in a way that would technically cover that, since there's a lot of citizens who don't interact with that ordinance often. It's mostly just going through and covering the ethics requirements of that ordinance, so there's an understanding.
Yeah, whatever. Okay, I'm willing to suffer a little.
May I ask you a question? As a follow-up question to that? You said you could. Are you committing to you will?
If I have to, yes.
Indeed. Okay, thank you very much.
If I don't have to, I won't. I mean, I think it's, like I say, I'm.
Me, too.
I'm the most ethical and honest person, I think, I've ever met.
Yes.
Welcome to the club, though. Well, I have one last, real quick.
Yeah.
In terms of the answer, if you would, you said somewhere that you were a consultant to the Union Rivers Center on Innovation or whatever.
I was, yeah.
What did that consist of?
Not a lot. I would meet with them and try to inspire people that resided there. And it's, you know, it was what it was.
But it was very honest.
But I was, it's a good match, I mean.
I'm pretty sure it was honest, though.
I'm an inventor, and I've got many patents, or not many, but four or five patents.
Okay.
And so it was, you know, a great match for the right person, but, you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next is John Wrenquist.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm John Wrenquist, and I'm currently the Executive Director of Friends in Action. I am not a resident of Ellsworth, I live on Mount Desert. Prior to taking over at Friends in Action, I spent twenty years in the Army as a Transportation Corps Officer, so I understand the transportation business, freight, rail, air. I am a, have a commercial pilot's license, both rotor wing and fixed wing. After that, I ran a company for thirty years doing information security in that capacity, worked with a lot of different organizations and agencies, founded a couple of business associations, pointing, I'm pretty comfortable working with groups and getting consensus and that sort of stuff, and understand that you don't always get your own way and that sort of thing. As a, as the founder and owner and CEO of a tech company, you know, I have a pretty good understanding of the communication needs and implementation processes and stuff like that. And then finally, back to Exec, to Friends in Action, Ellsworth is an aging-friendly city. We are a very intimate part of that process of the state's aging-friendly program, and I think I have an opportunity to bring a lot of the perspective of seniors in Ellsworth and throughout Hancock County to the Steering Committee.
Questions?
My question was answered in the last statement, so.
Anything, Mark Mallett?
That was a quick one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brevity on our part with questions shouldn't be interpreted as yes or no.
Paul Marcousian.
Hi there, I'm Paul Marcousian. I have lived in, moved to Ellsworth in two thousand and six after being in Sullivan for ten years. My wife and I came to this area on vacation in nineteen ninety-four and decided we wanted to live here, so we moved here in ninety-six. And I have, nine years ago this month, I got elected to the Ellsworth School Board, so I've been serving there ever since. I just, last November, started my fourth term. And I've, I think I have demonstrated that I can work collaboratively with the city on behalf of the school board, and I've served on, besides school board, I also served on the Board of Heart of Ellsworth. I was a founding board member there. I'm just really committed to Ellsworth. I love living here, and I love, I own a business here, and my kids have gone to school here. My younger son's still in high school. My wife and I are planning to stay here, you know, for, until the end of our lives, if we retire ever. We're going to stay here anyway. So, and I'm really excited about that this comprehensive plan is going to get underway, and I feel like I can offer certainly hard work and some insight. Our school age population is growing, our enrollment's growing. We had a little bit of a dip at PEMS, which is the elementary middle school, during and immediately after the pandemics, but it's starting to tick back up. Meanwhile, high school has grown. HCTC, I'm on the Advisory Board for HCTC. That's Hancock County Techable Center, which educates students from all over Hancock County. And that enrollment has grown a lot in the last couple of years, and this year, you know, it's, we have a record number of students attending there. So I think I could bring the education perspective to this process, which I think could be helpful. Any questions?
Sure. Some of the school board, some of your work with the school board in terms of incorporating diverse views that come into resolution or whatever, can you talk more about that?
Sure.
Were you able to do it?
Oh, well, I mean, we went through, so in, during COVID, there was some very strong opinions generated in the community about, you know, policies that we adopted to protect the safety of our students and staff. And as we all know, there was a lot of disagreement about whether we should have remote learning or not, whether we should have masks or not. And I think as, what those of us on the school board tried to do was allow people to have a voice, so we gave extensive opportunity at public comment at school board meetings for people to talk. A lot of it was that people just wanted to be heard. I feel like I managed to talk to people in a way that made them feel like they, even if I ultimately didn't always agree with what they were asking or couldn't give them what they were asking because we were constrained by statute or, you know, the governor's order, nevertheless, they felt like they were, their views, their concerns are being heard. And I've seen, it's been really gratifying since everything has been able to be opened up again, to see the people who were kind of arguing with each other just a few years ago, now they're at basketball games together and concerts at the schools together, and I feel like there's some forgiveness happening and some, people recognize that the most important thing is that we got back to full-time, in-person instruction, and we're trying to do what's best for the kids.
I think just the fact that you survived nine years on the school board now, where you're in your fourth term, speaks a lot for you.
Perseverance, at least.
Well, and that's, you know, I feel, when I, I, I like to be, I like to give service to my community. When I was in Sullivan for ten years, I was on the fire department, and, but not just, I don't want to just like be, I want to do. So on the fire department, you know, I showed up for truck checks on the weekends, and I went out for every call, and I did, I underwent training for firefighter one. And on the school board, you know, I try, I basically don't miss any meetings, I do the work that's required, I do the reading and the preparation that's required, because I think that if you're going to undertake something, you have to give it, give everything that's required, and you can't just, you know, I, going to seventy-five percent of the meetings is definitely something I can do, I feel probably more like a hundred percent, but.
That's good, I mean, I'm not doubting you, I mean, just, for as busy as the school board is.
Yeah.
Obviously, you're here and you're committed to this, so, I mean, I applaud you for that. I mean, give as much time as you're willing to put in for the city.
Paul, do you support litter boxes in high school restroom?
That's funny.
Just a little levity, that's all.
But you never know whether he's serious or not.
I just learned about that today. And I'm just.
Yeah, we've been, we've been asked about that, it's just.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, levity over.
Jennifer Shala.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so I grew up in Ellsworth for most of my childhood. We ended up moving to Austin, Texas. I thought I wanted to be a teacher, and so I started off as a teacher's assistant right around that time where they started putting standardized testing as the priority, and I realized I didn't really want to do that. So I started working in daycares until I realized I was broke. I went on to work for the State of Texas and Travis County, and then I moved to Oklahoma City where I was an accountant for an engineering firm, but, and then I moved back here, ooh, nine, ten years ago? So I have lived in Maine most of my life, most of my adult life, and I've been downtown pretty much that whole time. So my connections, actually, I see like a lot of my clients from the Ellsworth American, where I work with the downtown businesses, are in this room right now. So right now, my focus has been with the Ellsworth Historical Society. I am the Vice President and Outreach Coordinator. So it's been a rapidly growing organization over the last few years, and we have been really trying to get the community involved and to figure out the best ways to serve our community. And working with the Ellsworth American has really helped me to do that and to tune into the different demographics and the needs of the community. So, questions?
Of course. You know, we're trying to get in diverse views and so forth, as I said earlier.
Yeah.
And I saw that you were associated with some organic farming type stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you speak to that at all, and your involvement in that industry or anything?
Yeah, so prior to COVID, I decided that I wanted to get more into agriculture. I have a family history of farming, and I've worked with horses and all that stuff like my whole life. And so I was really interested in the idea of learning more about organic agriculture. And so I went to, oh, I don't remember the name of it now, but the, down by Sylvia's Cafe, there's a state organization, and they help you to connect you with different industries. And so they connected me with Triple Chick Farm in Town Hill, and I worked there for two years until COVID, and then I got laid off, and it was really sad, because I would still be there probably. It was an amazing job, it was so fun. So that actually.
They're opening it, I think, I just.
Yes.
Don't tell her that, she needs to stay with me.
Scratch that, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, don't bring that up, no. So, yes, and it's under new management now. So the people who were running it, one of the guys was actually an organic chemist, and so he was an amazing wealth of information when it came to like the actual soil composition and the difference between organic and conventional farming, and how organic versus conventional impacts the nutrition of plants, and then, you know, the impact of runoff and how wildlife is impacted and pollinators and all of the really interesting things. I remember one morning, we actually went out, and we had like a forty-five minute lesson where we just watched the bees, and they told us everything that anybody could ever want to know about bees, and, you know, where they go for the winter, and why they pick the plants that they pick, and like, it was a super interesting job, it was really cool.
Okay, well, that's really different perspective.
Yeah.
But thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, can I ask what brought you back to Ellsworth from Texas or Oklahoma?
So, okay, well, from Oklahoma, part of it was actually having nature, because that is like a godforsaken wasteland, and there's.
And that's a little message to all the Oklahomans.
Apologies, internet friends. So, yeah, it was like, they had like a man-made lake, and it was like, once you actually realize that the impact that that has on your psyche is really rough, and so I was like, I just need water. And so I came back thinking that I would probably like work somewhere for the summer and then move off to another city, and once I got back here, I was like, this is the greatest place ever. And so I decided I wanted to stay, just because you have such a different atmosphere when it's like, you start to see the same faces, and the neighbors drive by and they actually wave at you, like, it's really cool. And so I just like, you know, nurturing that kind of growth in the community that I've been seeing since I've been back here, you can actually see the change. At first, there was like that slump where it was like, we lost the grasshopper shop, and we lost J and B Atlantic, and it was like, oh, God, this is bad. But then it's like, it's actually come up, and to, you know, have come into this and be part of that growth, and now with the Down East Historic Designation that we've gotten and all that stuff is like something that's really cool and a lot to look forward to. So it's a perfect time to be doing this comprehensive plan and going after actually being like not just the gateway to Down East, but to being, you know, a core.
I'm good.
Good?
Thank you.
All right.
I would just point out, as you take your seat, that I do have an uncle that lives in Oklahoma. Seriously, just saying.
So you're agreeing with her?
No, I'm just saying, you know, just, well, watch your step there, kiddo.
Tracy Shekel. I hope I got that right.
You did, you did, and that's a, no mean feat. I'm Tracy Shekel, and I just have to say, having served on the town council in Gray and in their planning department, I have never seen this many people come out to be on any committee ever, and it's a testament to the town, which makes me feel good, because that's part of why I'm here. I've been in Maine, in southern Maine, since two thousand and seven. My husband took a job at Jack's two years ago, so it brought us here. And I have a long history of just being involved in economic development in pretty much every place we've lived, like, not unlike Paul, I like to get involved and roll up my sleeves. I am on the Board of Directors for Heart of Ellsworth right now, and as of a year ago, I am the Advertising and Marketing Manager for the Ellsworth American, which is why we don't want Jennifer to go away, because she's part of my team. But part of the reason that we're in Ellsworth is because of a perspective that I bring that many don't, is I have a congenital birth defect essentially that is low vision, and I can't drive. And so when we looked for a place to live up here, the two choices were Bar Harbor, because I could walk around, and Ellsworth, because I could walk around. And Bar Harbor lost, because in the winter, there's nothing to walk to, and in the summer, you get run over by cars. So I'm really passionate about making sure that going forward, as John said, we're not getting any younger the population here, public transportation, walkability, pedestrianism, aside from everything else that I have experience with, is what really has me passionate about being involved on the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Questions? Because I could talk all night.
Because you're a marketing person, right?
Yes, and so that's another piece, is the community outreach part of it, is, you know, if, I'm assuming that this committee at some point is going to start doing public meetings and educating the public and getting questions and surveys, and that's just another thing that I love, because I'm crazy.
Well, it doesn't have anything to do with this here, but I gotta ask you, like, how's it to work for Chris Crockett? Because Chris.
This is on television, right?
This is in televised, and he was known.
I mean, he used to help us out here at City Hall, and I took some adult-led classes, you know, probably when he was still in high school, you know, on computers, and I was just always totally amazed, and now he's.
I have to tell you, I am totally not sucking up here. I love working for Chris. He has an open mind, he's full of energy, he never says no to somebody's idea as long as it's been thought through. He's like, try it, let's throw it against the wall, if it sticks, great, if not, we move on. He's awesome.
I mean, it's just, I think it's amazing from, you know, how long ago I knew him as a snot-nosed teenager.
I still think of him as a snot-nosed teenager, because I think I could have given birth to him, so.
I'm not even going to go there.
Okay.
Any real questions?
No, I think you just covered the waterfront too much.
Okay.
I'm trying to keep this light. Thank you. Actually, you made it just in time. You made it.
Oh, thank you.
Are you out of breath or?
I don't live far. All right.
Yes, please. This is Brian Langley.
I missed all the directions, so I'll have to kind of wing it. So I'm assuming.
So try to impress us, Brian.
I'm assuming that you want my name and where I live and all that sort of thing is that. Good evening, folks. My name is Brian Langley. I live down on South Street. My wife and I own the Union River Lobster Pot for 27 years. Taught in the Ellsworth School System for 27 years. Taught Culinary Arts and was an assistant director there as well. Then after I retired, I served 10 years in the Legislature, served on the Labor Committee, Taxation Committee, did four years on Marine Resources, and eight years on the Education Committee and chaired that. And so as a part of all of those sort of experiences, I think, lended a pretty good set of skills to be able to work on a comprehensive plan. Seeing as it's in statute that we have to do this. So spent some time studying that statute. And it has a fair amount of language in there about dealing with conflicts, you know? And it seems like it, the statute is built in a number of conflicts in there that you'll have to resolve as you try to work through the Comprehensive Plan. So that's really where I spent a lot of my time. I have run probably over 1,000 public hearings and had to negotiate a fair amount of contentious legislation through a committee and out the door. And so know how to kind of work on those issues. That's sort of the mechanics of working on a committee. I think the real reason why you see me here is that this is the roadmap, what I feel, for our community really to plan where we're going to go in the next 10 years. So as a small business owner, you know, I sit on the Ellsworth Area Chamber Board. And so to have a voice of small business on this planning committee, the Comprehensive Plan, to bring to the table what it's like to be an independent owner, a mom and pop, so to speak. We see a lot of more of the corporate stuff out there. So preservation of our mom and pop businesses is really, really important to me, certainly as is education. But also in the strategic and in this plan from the state level, issues around, for example, working waterfronts, of which we have one in Ellsworth out of the pier. I'm late because I chair the Maine Lobster Marketing Collaborative Board, which is the body that promotes lobster, both domestically and across the world. So we have a board meeting every quarter. So important to our economy and in this area are the fisheries. And having access to working waterfront is really important. I also spend quite a bit of time in pride of buying and a lot of locally-produced foods that we serve at the restaurant from local mussels, steamers, lobster, blueberries, and then deal with organic farmers. And I noticed in the strategic, in the statute from the state, that you have to, there's a lot of consideration in there for those industries as well. So there's a lot that kind of is in here, and could probably talk longer than you want me to. But that's my interest really, is in that we have a solid plan that you can move forward and use, frankly. Have something that is not just satisfying a state requirement. As you know, sitting at the city, there are a lot of things that are in statute that are required by the state, and you have to do these reports and you put them. And oftentimes, they end up on a shelf and sit there, and people invested a lot of time in those. But it's really important that a product at the end is something you keep on your desk and refer to, you know, throughout the next 10 years. And that would be the goal, to have something that's really usable. So with that, I would take any questions you might have.
I'm good.
I'm not sure if that's what I was supposed to do, but I missed the direction, so. Sorry for being late.
No, you were right on time, as it turns out, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicola Camarda. Nicola? I think I said that right. Nicola Camarda?
I can just review the last two questions per usual, like if somebody's not here.
Oh, you're going to read that?
I can read it. Nicola is interested in serving on the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. He moved to Ellsworth six months ago from a big city in Minnesota. He can see a small city growing that needs a new outside look. Combined with his experience in flow and development, he can give a small contribution. I think the union of viewpoints can make the possible, or the impossible possible. His qualifications are his experience in renovations of historical buildings in Italy, has experience in business development, personal coaching, design architecture, construction development. He's also a business analyst and strategic planner.
Nancy Smith.
Nancy, you're a. I wanted to make an entrance.
Nicely planned.
That never works for me. I was hoping to find some water and did not, so. Hi, my name is Nancy Smith. I never knew when I, I think I applied within two or three days of the announcement coming out.
You were the first? You were the first?
Okay, I was the first, I mean. To know that it's competitive to be a part of a comp plan is really exciting. It says a lot. I'm loving hearing the other people who are involved here. Trying to address your questions in addition to what I put on the application. I lived in Monmouth for close to 30 years, west of Augusta, served on the Comp Plan Committee 20 years ago. And my role there, my husband's family sent me and said, you need to protect farmers. And that was what my perspective was that I brought there. But while I was in Monmouth for that time, I also worked on the Main Street Committee, the Economic Development Committee. I was a 4-H leader, part of the Fair Association, and was on the Board for the Rural Community Action Ministries. My work gives me an interesting slant for this, too. I've been with Grow Smart Maine for 13 years. We're a statewide nonprofit, and our role is to help communities manage change in alignment with smart growth. How do you get all the things that we're talking about tonight to work together? That it's not about choosing economic development or the open space. It's that we can have it all if we're really thoughtful. And that really comes down to the core of the purpose of the Comp Plan. In that work, and then also as with Brian, I served in the Legislature for eight years. I have a great deal of experience in facilitation and collaboration. We're a statewide organization, and until two weeks ago, I was the only full-time employee. The only way that Grow Smart gets anything done is through collaborating with other organizations. I served as House Chair of the Committee on Business Research and Economic Development. For two of my four terms, I was also on ag conservation and forestry. So it is, as Brian described it, it's about finding the center while holding on to what's important. It's an incredible, incredible experience. The other thing I bring to this, because I have one of the weirdest resumes I know, is I also have been a licensed forester and I was a farmer for close to 17 years. And so we were a dairy farm for quite a while, diversified into grass-fed livestock. So I have, I've been on the kill line for poultry. We had a HESAP-certified, state-inspected processing facility in our barnyard. A tough way to make a living, but an amazing way to make a living as well. So I bring that natural resource perspective to this. I have been in Ellsworth since July of last year. I have been driving through Ellsworth regularly for the past three years when my daughter got a job at Jackson Lab. And our, my daydream was someday I will retire. And if I'm still flying solo, then I want to buy a duplex with my daughter. And it was a daydream until just about a year ago, everything in my life changed and I got to consider, where do you want to live? Who do you want to live with? And right there was, I want to live in Ellsworth with Marina. And so I called her and I said, do you want to buy a house together in Ellsworth? And she went, are you kidding? And can I buy my own cat? So within a week, we have Emmett, and he's joined my cat and my dog. But I used to drive through Ellsworth and daydream about living here. I know Tracy from the Maine Broadband Coalition. And in February of last year, she said, you should move to Ellsworth. And in April, I said, I'm moving to Ellsworth. She's very, very convincing. A couple of things, I think, just to wrap up. One of the points, whether it's because I bring this value or I want you to be aware, a lot of my work is now in advocacy in front of the Legislature, and Grow Smart is leading with a group called Build Maine, an effort called Policy Action 2023. It's really interesting. I can talk to you sometime. But one of the things we're taking on is a complete rewrite of the growth management law, which is where the comp plan resides. We want for the community members who build the comp plan to spend less time building inventories that will be out of date the minute they're written because all of this stuff is online now, and more time talking about the implementation. Talk about what we love and what we want for this community, a little bit of getting the framework of what we have now, because that will change constantly, and then move into the implementation. It should not take two years to have a plan that completely burns out the committee. I'm working in the town of Bodenham, and I've never heard of this before. The Comp Plan Committee updated the comp plan, and they kept meeting monthly after that for implementation. So we want that kind of energy that we're able to have a comp plan, that we all still like each other and want to work together and want to get together regularly to make a difference. The way that I view this is, when people ask me, how is it living in Ellsworth? And I say, it's phenomenal. I love my house. I live kitty-corner from Fogtown Brewing. My first night here, I'm getting settled in, and there's live music. And I went outside and we are the, I call my side yard the annex for Fogtown because of the live music. I love my neighborhood. Right behind me is Maine Shellfish. I've got a funeral home. I've got communities. I walk Franklin Street downtown with a dog every night. I love the city. I love the region. I love Maine. And I think that that's the circle that we all look at. Are you safe at home? And then what is your neighborhood like? What's the city like? What's the region like? And Maine. I will close with that and happy to answer any other questions.
Actually, one comment, you kind of tied it in with Brian's, you know, about the impression that the comp plan in that one town said that he continued to meet after that.
Yeah.
As Brian mentioned, I was employed by the city for almost 40 years. And oftentimes, you know, studies are done, they go on the shelf. And, I mean, I've seen some fantastic studies done, and unfortunately, that's where they go and they collect dust. I'm sure all of you don't want to spend your time, you know, working on this comp plan to get to the point where that goes on the shelf again for 10 years. And so I kind of like the idea that.
Good, good. You know, our current law, the growth management law predates the internet. So the requirements for the comp plan, it's been modeled a lot and changed, but it's that old. So we need to be able to adapt and change with the times. I think the other point, to your point about making this worthwhile, is the amount of money the city's going to be investing. And while we're talking about everything that we want in this city, we also want municipal government to function well. And if we're investing six figures just in a consultant, let alone all the staff time, we want this to be worthwhile from that perspective as well.
Absolutely.
I have one.
Sure.
And I hope this is not too pointed. You know, you sound like you have a long-term, or, you know, reasonably long-term commitment to Ellsworth, although you just moved here, and I get what you said. But the association with Grow Smart Maine, is that, I mean, is that a remote thing with, because it's headquartered in Augusta, right? I mean, if there's.
Headquarters are in Augusta, and we were working a hybrid deal before the pandemic. But when I had this opportunity to decide where I wanted to live, I called my board chair and I said, I'm confident I can do this job from Ellsworth. And she said, of course you can. She grew up in the Blue Hill Peninsula, so that helped. But I'm going into Augusta tomorrow, so I have one 12-hour day a week, or sometimes I'll spend the night. I've got a son who lives outside of Augusta. That's been the way I've worked for probably the last five years, is one or two days a week in the office and work from here. It also is good for Grow Smart because it gives us more of that statewide perspective. I've got board members in the Portland area. I've got one in Prescott Isle. But for me to be in Hancock County is really, Grow Smart sees the value in that. So I planted, but it was like, I saw where you were going and thought, well, I wasn't born in Ellsworth, but I plan to die here. So very, very long time from now. I know. I'm hoping in like 50 years, so.
So have you found the duplex yet?
No, but we have the sweetest house and maybe put a granny flat on it in a couple of years. Playing with that idea, too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Zoe Corbio. Eric Marshow.
Well, are you going to read?
Oh, sorry. I guess I got back up. Okay, man, go ahead.
Zoe's interested in serving on the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee because she would love to see the opportunity to be involved in Ellsworth's new comprehensive plan. She wants to be part of the local community conversations. She's lived in Lemoine, Ellsworth, Bar Harbor, and Solven since she's been attending College of the Atlantic. Her work and lived experience has added to her self-development and agency. She's been out on her own. She's adjusted since she's moved from Maryland. She gets points for that because cool people come from Maryland, right, Molly? And she's attended contra dances, free meals, talks, and more. She likes to bridge gaps and make connections between people and the planet. She thinks it's important that all people of ages, colors, genders, liabilities, and more are brought to the steering committee table. She's engaged, excited, and eager to learn more about land use, economic development, housing, transportation, and more. Her qualifications are that although she's young and don't have as many qualifications as some of the other candidates, she wants to learn and apply what she has learned. Her maturity and lived experience and work ethic bring a lot to the table. She moved to the area from her home in southern Maryland, and she's worked at Wicked Munchies, Sherman's Bookstore, and Home Depot. Most of her background for wanting to be part of the conversations around the Comprehensive Plan comes from her internships last summer. She did a little bit of everything inside the office to outside and on the trail with Frenchman Bay Conservancy in Green Ellsworth. And she even attended Aaron Doherty's talk the other week at the Virch Bay Retirement Village in Bar Harbor. Some of the classes that have inspired and influenced her the most at the College of the Atlantic include community development, intimate partner violence, nature, humans, philosophy, supporting students with disabilities, and more. And she would love the chance to apply these teachings in a real-world experience.
I would just add that although she said it here in the application, that that internship was with Ellsworth Green Plan and also Frenchman's Bay. So, you know, here in the area, basically. And let me ask you a question. There's a couple, one person, Leslie, we expected not to be here. These other people, have they indicated that they wouldn't be here or are they, we just?
No, not everyone indicated to me that they wouldn't be here.
So they did not indicate that they would not be here?
Yeah.
But we indicated to them on the application that it was.
That they should be.
Well, that it was okay if they didn't come. Right. It does not hurt them that they're not here.
Okay. But they haven't told you, though. I mean, you sent them an email saying.
I did send an email, yes.
Come on down, right?
But, yeah, it's not mandatory to be here.
Okay, it's not mandatory.
And we explicitly said it would not jeopardize their.
Yes.
Review process if they did.
I didn't say that. I didn't realize that we had said that.
Eric Marshow.
Hello, yeah, Eric Marshell. So I moved here about six years ago from, I lived in Arizona for about 10 years prior to that. I was born in Maine, though, so don't hold that against me. I have two young daughters in the elementary school system and live up on the hill kind of over there on Liberty Street. Since I've lived in Ellsworth, I've been involved with the Down East Core as a business mentor for about three or four years. Short stint on the EMS Parent Teacher Friends Group. I was the board member of the Heart of Ellsworth for three years and the treasurer for, I think, two of those three years. And currently, I'm the Chair of the City of Ellsworth Recreation Commission here. So I don't want to repeat a lot that I put in my application, but I know the brief stated, there's a large emphasis on, you know, community engagement, collaboration. So I think I have a lot of experience with that in my current role. I oversee, you know, several departments. I work with many departments in my company. Oh, sorry, I didn't actually tell you what I do. So I'm the Director of Business Development for rhythm family hotels. So we used to have 13 hotels in the Ellsworth-Bar Harbor area. We've reduced down to about seven in the last, since. We've reduced down to about seven since I've been on the job about five years ago. So, as far as specialty, you know, knowledge and insight, I do a lot of the data analysis for our company. That's my main job, is basically doing revenue management, compiling data. So, for the last six weeks, for instance, I've been looking at guest surveys, reviews, revenue forecast data, you know, demographic data. So, I think I could offer some insights into, not only obviously people that live here, but people that are traveling to the area, which I think is a big part of, could be a big part of our comprehensive plan. I've worked with, very recently, with Michelle Gagden at the Town of Bar Harbor to provide some of that information that they're looking for for their comprehensive plan. So, a lot of that would be trying to determine, like, who's traveling to the area, how many people are coming, and various information like that, so.
One specific question. You said that the Withem Hotel chain or whatever, properties have been reduced from fifteen or something to eight. Are the, is there still distribution between Bar Harbor and Ellsworth, or?
Yeah, so we used to own the.
I mean, you don't have to tell me which ones you own.
Oh, it's okay. Yeah, so it's more skewed towards Bar Harbor.
Okay, but there are some here?
Yes, still in Ellsworth, correct. Yes.
And there were more in Ellsworth than?
There was more, yes.
Okay, fair enough.
There's been a lot more kind of outside competition. It used to just be like really two or three local kind of families, I guess, that owned a lot of the properties, but a lot more outside competition moving into the area.
Okay.
If you can, I can use that on the Motel Guest and stuff. Do some of that, it seemed like you alluded to it, is what, like, visitors of the area are looking for, what they find to be happy with versus what they wished was here? Is that kind of some of the data that you look at and you collect?
Yeah, I'm not saying it would all be relevant to our comprehensive plan, but as far as the Town of Bar Harbor, they were just trying to more figure out, like, how many people are in town on various days, like, who's traveling from where, that type of information. But I'm just saying, overall, I think I do a lot of data analysis, which I believe this will involve is talking to a lot of various organizations, stakeholders, and then basically, you know, coming up with solutions, so.
So, through what processes or systems do you gain that data that you analyze?
Just a lot of it's, you know, some of it is computer-generated reporting, but a lot of it's just going through. For instance, the Town of Bar Harbor didn't exactly even know how many, like, hotel rooms or Airbnbs were on the island. So, that's something I've just personally worked on over the last three or four years. So, some of that's literally just going in and finding every single listing over a large volume of time. But a lot of it just sort of bookings and that kind of information.
So, you were able to mine the data from bookings, for example?
Yeah, we have, like, some software that does some of that, but, yeah.
So, you know that twelve people came from Pennsylvania or whatever.
Oh, exactly. Yeah, we have tons of that type of information, you know, geodata, all that, so.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Kind of along the lines of, I guess, I'm not sure if it was an ad that I heard on the radio today, but some organization rated Ellsworth as one of the top places in the country for short-term rentals.
Yeah, Eric, you're right.
But one of the things I found amazing was that, one of the things that they found to be the best part of it is there's, Ellsworth basically has no rules and regulations on short-term rentals. I'm thinking, well, is that a good thing or a bad thing?
The right question is.
Yeah, well, it's like, okay, apparently, apparently, a lot of people are doing Airbnbs in Ellsworth. And that's one of the things I've noticed recently, is that I see a lot of houses for rent from October to May. And then, you know, the rest of the summer, it's all, you know, presumably week-long rentals. And it's like, hmm, is that a good thing or is that a bad thing?
I think I put that in my application, but I think that should be a top concern for this plan because, in my opinion, it's pretty much destroyed some of MDI as far as the, it affects affordable housing. It affects, you know, who we can hire, if people can actually live there. Most of the people we've hired in the last three years, even upper management people, can't live on MDI, for example, because the, you know, the scarcity of the housing, as you're saying, dries up the rents, and they just can't live there, so.
It always seems like the town council is dealing with that in Bar Harbor.
Yeah, they have in the last couple of years, but still, there's about a thousand, I think, rooms on the island that are Airbnb, so. And same thing here. I think, if, you know, if nothing else, people should be looking at that here, because it does affect a lot of other areas, such as affordable housing, ability to hire people and whatnot, so.
Thank you. Anything?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Limquist.
I could read his application. Eric's interested in serving on the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. This is likely the last fee much he'll reside. He moved here fairly recently, I think. No, he did. He left here from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen seventy-three, and then moved back from twenty nineteen to present. He's like, he'd like to leave a positive legacy on the city. Too many expect others to do the heavy thinking. I suppose he's volunteering to do that for them. And then, his qualifications are, he has no particular experience in planning or other related areas, but he's a quick study. And it sounds like he just really would like to be involved.
Wendy Lassard.
I think she also told me she couldn't make it, but I couldn't be.
Well, there's somebody standing behind you.
My mistake.
Are you Wendy?
I am Wendy.
Yep, okay.
Wendy's with us.
So, I'm Wendy Lassard, and I'm having quite a moment of imposter syndrome after listening to all of my colleagues out here. It's like, hmm, okay. So, I'll try to highlight some things from my application and give you some other information and make me stand out a little bit. So, I grew up in Jackman on the western interior Maine. Somerset County is the second poorest county in Maine. And so, I have definitely fallen in love with the coast and with Ellsworth for a lot of things that we have here that the interior Maine does not have, and so I'm very appreciative of that piece. I moved here about twenty-five years ago, following a man and a job, and I still have the man and don't have the job anymore, and I'm definitely ahead. So, I wasn't.
Was that a trade you made, or?
So, I did teach high school English at MDI High School for nineteen years, and I was a department head there for seven years when we were going through a lot of school restructuring and reorganization and following the learning results and a lot of the stuff that came down from the state. MDI was one of the schools that decided to try to follow the timeline and ended up being ahead of the curve eventually. And as a department head, I was basically a mini-curriculum coordinator, so there was a lot of responsibility. We did a school accreditation plan, which I love that process, and it's looking at who we are. It's kind of like the comp plan, like, who we are, what do we want to hold on to, what do we need to work on, and how do we set up that plan? And then, that plan is, that report is provided to a visiting group. So, I was on the steering committee for that, and I love that process. I love gathering information from various stakeholders, making sense of things, communicating it clearly to people, you know, in a way that makes sense and that can be used later on. I also was on a visiting group for an accreditation at Meselonsky High School, where we get that plan and then go look for the evidence. And sometimes, it's not always that honest. And helping schools look at who they are and what they need more. So, I think that that would be something that might stand me in good stead here. Because, to be honest, when I looked at the, I was interested. And then, when I looked at the online, like, what do you have to offer us? And do you have expertise in these areas? I said, no, 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 no. Okay, I'm not going to apply. You know, this is not my thing. But then, I sat with it for maybe a week and decided to apply because of that experience with accreditation. And then, another thing that's been alluded to a bit here, but I am really concerned about climate change and the things, the pressures that's going to bring to bear on everybody, but in particular, our own community as Maine and as Ellsworth. And so, I would look at everything in the process and with the comp plan is, how does this aspect make our community resilient? How does this stand us in good stead with population migration that's going to go on, with some of the water issues we're going to have, with some of the local food issues we're going to have? And I'm a self-employed licensed massage therapist. I've started growing a lot more of my own food. You know, I had Lyme disease and had to deal with that for three years. And then, COVID came almost right after, and I am still self-employed licensed massage therapist. So, I'm tenacious. And if I believe in something a lot, I will work on it. I have a good Maine work ethic. So, still have a bit of imposter syndrome. You have a good pool of candidates. You really do. It's pretty exciting. Do you have any questions for me?
I'm sorry, do you have any experience with the comprehensive planning process or anything?
No, no. I'm assuming that there are parallels with the accreditation process with the schools.
To a certain degree, yeah.
To a certain degree, yeah. Yeah, but I am, I'm a student, and I love learning. So, I got my bachelor's from Colby and a couple degrees from UMaine, so.
Colby and UMaine?
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
I'm good.
I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Levi Rogers.
Good evening. So, my name's Levi Rogers. I am a resident of Ellsworth. I moved here with my family, wife and son, who's four years old, back in July twenty twenty-one. So, relatively new resident. I work at the Jackson Laboratory as the Sustainability Program Manager. I was brought to Jax to develop and implement a sustainability program for the organization. I came to Ellsworth after living in upstate New York, where I worked at Skidmore College as Director of Sustainability Programs and Assessment and had been there for almost nine years. Locally, I've been involved with Green Ellsworth as a volunteer and decided to apply to this opportunity to try to formalize my service within the community. My career's really, again, been focused on sustainability, and that's really focused around or considering environmental stewardship, social equity, and economic prosperity. So, when I'm talking about sustainability, I'm thinking about those three pillars, if you will, and trying to balance, you know, factors related to economics, societal impacts, as well as environmental stewardship. My involvement professionally has been involved with organizational strategic planning, renewable energy development, land use planning, public and sustainable transportation, food systems, waste management, climate resilience, climate master planning, and institutional policy and planning as well. Sustainability work is really often just, you know, long-term thinking, long-term planning, envisioning. And so, I think that, you know, my experience looking at, you know, comprehensive planning and thinking, you know, years out, how do we develop a plan that's going to prepare us for the needs and issues in the future? That's kind of the type of work that I'm often involved with. But then, also developing, you know, tangible strategies that will allow an organization or a community to kind of move toward that vision over time. So, again, not to create a plan that sits on a shelf, but really one that can be used on a regular basis so that we can kind of track and identify a roadmap toward long-term goals and visions. My experience has required an ability to collaborate and bring diverse stakeholder groups together, kind of understanding various perspectives and understanding sort of resources that are available and seeking to develop solutions to challenges that kind of meet the needs of as many stakeholders as possible. But again, also, you know, considering the resources that one has to work with. So, with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
You actually work in Bar Harbor for Jax or out of the Ellsworth Center?
Located in Bar Harbor, but my work is involved.
It's just, it's not an in-depth question. I, in terms of, have you been involved with an outreach to different parts of the community and so forth in the sustainability work that you've done with Jax? Or anywhere else, for that matter?
Yeah, my work in New York was, I was involved with community groups there for nine years. Land use planning, working on a Green Belt Trail system in the city of Saratoga. And my work here at Jax will be doing the same, working with local government in California on different projects. And then, my involvement here in Ellsworth with Green Ellsworth, I'm looking to develop collaborations and partnerships so Jax can be more involved in the community in that way.
And your work in New York was at Skidmore, is that right?
Yes.
So, you sort of just touched on this, but your work with Green Ellsworth is that it seems like it has a big spin on Jax, like, you're their emphasis to be more involved. Is that correct in my understanding of what you just said? Or was it your personal interest in Green Ellsworth that brought you to work with them?
My personal interest. I wanted to be more involved in the new community that I live in, so that was an area where I saw some alignment and values.
And in your decision-making to take the job at Jax, can you speak a little bit about, like, coming from away, your views of Ellsworth? Like, was it Jax that brought you? Was it the region? Talk about that a little bit.
It's both, you know. The opportunity to develop a program for Jax was, you know, it's a new challenge. Also, considering climate change and understanding sort of the trends in the trajectory. You know, Maine is a great place to live. And when I moved here, we temporarily lived in some Jax housing in Bar Harbor and kind of searched out where we wanted to actually move to, and Ellsworth is top of the list.
I'm good.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Lolais.
Disclaimer, I'm in the out-of-breath stage of the final month here. So, I might take some time. So, I will start with my weaknesses, which you can call diversity if you want. I am from away. I moved here four years ago.
That's not necessarily a bad thing.
Diversity.
Many people here from away.
Serendipitously, right before the pandemic, so that worked out well for me. Got to capitalize on those. I'm also, I live in Sedgwick, but I was interested in this because this is, for anyone in Hancock County, this is our downtown corridor, so this is where the development happens. So, my background is in real estate development. I grew up, always wanted to be a developer. Studied finance and started my development career in Connecticut, where I did mixed-use development there. My first one was a two-hundred-million-dollar mixed-use project in Norwalk, Connecticut. And in that one, that's a lot of the relevant experience started there. That's where I worked with neighborhood planning meetings to educate the neighborhood on what we were building. I was the main point of contact for planning and zoning, for architects, for engineers, for the legal team, and managed the product, the project from beginning to end. I also started a development company in metro Atlanta after that. Wanted to be part of development there. And so, I worked on several developments there. I came back to New York and dove into construction project management to get that side of the experience. So, I also am well-versed in commercial construction, particularly mixed-use, affordable housing, adaptive reuse, urban infill, any type of brownfield development. And about four years ago, my husband and I said, we want to find our forever home and start a family. And I was like, let me show you Maine. I think you'll like it. And so, I brought him here, and he immediately, as soon as he got out here, he was like, I love this place. And so, we moved here. Oh, and now I'm taking time off. Oh, so, most recently, I grew a startup. We did a planning and zoning automation. We specialized in New York planning and zoning because the complexity meant that you needed a tool, like what we have. Right now, we're going through an acquisition, so I'm taking time off to start a family and and mesh in the area more. So, very well-versed in planning and zoning because of that, so.
And you hope to get, after you take your break, hope to get back into development, planning in this area?
I always wanted to, yeah. I do hope to, but I got fairly disillusioned in it early because I came into development because I loved urban planning. So it's a tradition in my, my family. I'm an Olmstead descendant, so we've.
Literally?
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
My mother's a little Olmstead. So it's, it's been a long tradition of being invested in urban planning and architecture. And I, as a kid, thought, "I'll be a developer and I'll get to build all these great things for the community." And it became more about navigating financial markets and whatnot. So I've always wanted to kind of cross that chasm a bit and be more on the public side so I can build, focus more on smart growth and sustainable development. And right now, I'm studying GIS to, I'm also, I'm a data analyst as well. So I'm transitioning into spatial analytics to incorporate that. Any questions?
Anything?
I got nothing more.
I guess we're all set. Thank you.
Cool.
Last but not least, Erin Witham?
Hi, everyone. I'm Erin Witham. I grew up in Maine in the mid-coast area and I moved here in end of 2018. I live in southwest harbor, but I'm a relatively new staff member at Frenchman Bay Conservancy and was encouraged to apply, to participate with the full backing of the conservancy to participate in this process. Frenchman Bay Conservancy has, you know, been a lead partner in the Ellsworth Green Plan and been involved in a lot of partnered projects in Ellsworth, such as the River Walk, and I think has a real interest in linking green spaces and linking economic development and green spaces and good planning in the town. A little bit more about myself, I think I said in my application, I've been on the board of the Hancock County Planning Commission for the past few years, as well as the Hancock County Soil and Water District, because I wanted to get more involved in my community and learn about how some of these things are done, how decisions are made, and kind of that other piece of planning with soil and water and also with, more directly with planning. And then I mentioned on my application that some of the work I've been doing for the past few years has been with an organization called the Down East Conservation Network. And a big focus of that project has been to work with conservation groups and municipalities to address the common conflict of land use with conservation and taxes and to think about doing creative solutions together. So I've got a lot of experience sort of facilitating, bringing stakeholders in to come to consensus together and work together where there are some big barriers and people are pretty entrenched in their views and working together to think beyond some of those entrenched views. So, not to say that the Conference of Planning would be that way, but just in terms of kind of coming into it perspective of working for an environmental organization, but also wanting to kind of build bridges and look at the ways that conservation and development can coexist.
Ah, sure. Can you speak at all to, I mean, I understand you work for FVC and I know what they do and all that. The question I really have is, and you worked with the Hancock County Planning Committee, you're not working with them on their board or whatever. I guess the question I have is, you know, how much of a regional perspective do you have versus an Ellsworth perspective? And do you have a sense of how you think they work?
Sure, sure. That's a really good question. Yeah, I mean, I think what a lot of people have said has resonated with me in terms of, you know, I think of Ellsworth as my service center, the place where, you know, I live, you know, in, on MDI, but Ellsworth is where so many things I need to do, medical things, all those things happen. And so having a really strong service center to me is important as a resident, not in Ellsworth. And I think similarly, some of the work that we're doing regionally, it really relies on Ellsworth, the strength of Ellsworth and what it brings to the, to the region. So for me, it's, you know, it's a balance of both, even though I have been working in both, you know, all across Hancock County.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's that, right?
That covers everything.
That's that.
Right now, we're going to go into executive session pursuant to one MRSAA, section 405, 6A, to discuss the appointment of individuals to serve on the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee.
Can I speak first? Can I speak first?
Yes, please.
So the applicants, we already have a waiting area, but if you exit, go to the right kind of towards the dispatches, there are some chairs and a table and a good place to kind of commune. Heard somebody say they wanted water earlier. If you go upstairs in the planning office, in the right-hand corner or closet, there's a package of bottled water. If you just want to grab it, bring it down and let people grab some.
Do they necessarily have to wait if they don't want to or can't?
People don't have to wait, but if you've stayed this long, you might as well.
Well, you know, yeah, but if this takes 10 minutes, then they should wait.
Yeah.
If it takes an hour and a half.
Hopefully it won't take an hour and a half.
Apparently it's not going to take an hour and a half because he's just going to give it up.
And you should make a motion to enter executive session?
Oh, my gosh.
You should make a motion to enter executive session?
Make a motion that we go to what, executive session?
I would just say, I make a motion to enter executive session and read what's on the agenda pursuant to blah, blah, blah.
You want me to say, literally say that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd love it.
You'd love to hear that, would you, out of my mouth? Okay, I make a motion, we go into executive session pursuant to one MRSAA, section 405, 6A, to discuss the appointment of individuals to serve on the Comprehensive Planning Steering Committee.
Well, second it. All the Viva.
And off we go.
I got a bitter understanding of what you went through for eight years.
Yeah? It's not easy.
Good to go.
Okay, so we got everybody who stuck around?
Yeah.
Okay, so again, thank you for coming. We picked our eight. So I'll make a motion that we select the following members for the Elswood Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. Nick Turner, Paul Marcosian, Brian Langley, Aaron Witham, Nancy Smith, Eric Marishow, Jennifer Sala, and Levi Rogers.
Second.
Paul, on your behalf.
And immediately point out, okay, that there's more than enough stuff to be done down the line with this plan. So it's not like, you know, all of you can really find a good spot in the planning process to, you know, chair a subcommittee or be on a subcommittee or whatever, so, you know.
And you'll probably receive a call from me asking you to be involved more, so.
There you go.
I was just gonna say that, did you have any staff comments for us and who we selected?
If the people who were not selected would like to leave, they can. The people who were selected, I think everybody is still here potentially.
No.
No, okay, well, it's probably be an email, figure out a time when we can have the first steering committee meeting.
Okay.
So, yeah, we won't do that now. And, yeah, no, thank you to everybody who applied and attended tonight.
Thank you.
And again, you'll probably hear from me either way because subcommittees play a big role in the comprehensive planning process, and we need a lot of voices, so.
And obviously, with 12 people on the committee, you know, everybody's not, you know, we're not gonna find the perfect time for everybody to attend every time, but obviously, we want everybody to attend.
Every time.
Certainly as much as you can. I mean, this is a long-term commitment.
What's the, what is the timeframe usually to put out a plan?
About two years.
Two years.
And the first order of business is the review, the steering committee reviews the proposals for the, from the consultants, right? Is that correct?
I was gonna have more of a fun meeting the first time around.
Okay.
A team building, like fun meeting the first time around.
Oh, for them, but when, when, when does, when does the second meeting occur then?
Probably shortly after that.
Yeah, I mean, it's by the, when, when do the proposals do?
The 22nd.
Of February.
February, yeah.
So that's one of the first non-fun things, I guess.
I was on the city website, and it was probably me, but I was looking for the last comprehensive plan to kind of look at, and I couldn't.
It's on our planning department page, but I can also, yeah.
There was, there's like so many things you can click on, and say comprehensive in the word that.
That's, that's a kind of a misdirection.
Yeah, super.
It's, well, it's really posted by recency, and it's so all that buried in the bottom.
Okay.
But I have to say that, you know, I've been looking around at other small towns or smallish cities or whatever, and they, the enthusiasm and the willingness of people who serve on this is pretty remarkable, really. So, that's cool. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I give everybody.
As a comment for just the planning board, I do have a Mylar for you guys to sign and the proof that they provided a new decommissioning plan for the solar from last month, or from this month's meeting.
I don't have to tell you that.
The reason I ask is, in assuring everybody, I wonder if I would be better sure in a subcommittee, and speaking to her, I think someone like that would be even more effective.
They have.
Well, you know, I have to say, well, I don't agree.
You said you have Mylars.
Yep, once, whenever you're ready to make a motion to adjourn, you can.
I mean, that's fine, but.
Okay.
For my.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, so I make a motion to adjourn, but we have Mylar to sign.
I think.
Yeah, no, we don't know. Where are the Mylars?
Right here.
I'm fully committed.
There you go.
Thanks, guys.
That was the right thing to say, Nick.